The day after Pearl Harbor.
To the December 8th meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. And please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's the anniversary of John Lennon's presence.
Yes, today is the anniversary of John Lennon's. I'm not sure if anybody here was alive then.
Wasn't he married to Yvonne?
I was.
I was too.
Before we go on, I would like to ask you for a moment of silence so we can remember the troops who served both in this country and abroad, in Iraq, Afghanistan, and elsewhere around the world, and all those who died for our country. I wonder how many groups, boards, whatever, do that on a regular basis? Imagine the power of that.
By the way, anecdotally, yesterday I was part of a history class over at Harwich High School, and Mr., let's say, Rick Houston, who's the head of the History Department, did something I thought was really wonderful. He projected on a screen all 2,300 names of people who had perished at Pearl Harbor. And ironically, he had a picture of the West Virginia and the day before yesterday at the dedication of, what do you call it, the Wind Tower in Dennis for the CCRTA, there was a survivor of Pearl Harbor who was on the West Virginia, and it was like, you know, Rick says to me, "We didn't set this up." I said, "No, but that, you know, there are a lot of survivors of Pearl Harbor that live on the Cape."
And just anecdotally, if I can just add that I thought was an interesting statistic was, you know, John Lennon, you know, was killed 30 years ago, so they were talking about that, and this young reporter, British reporter, said that he was doing retrospective because at the time it also reflected on violence, gun violence in America also, you know, that was the highlight. And since then, in the last 30 years, 1 million people, 1 million Americans have lost their lives to gun violence in America, which is staggering. So it's something to think about. Guns around the house, you'll use that first instead of having another thought. Anyway, now that we've had our commentary.
Is there any more public comment?
Any more public comment? It hasn't looked that way. Well, I want to say that I went to the annual meeting of the Bi-Fresh by Local last evening.
Isn't that wonderful?
And Bill came in, and it was absolutely amazing. First of all, the food was, at first it was salad and soup and this wonderful dessert, but it was really the energy of the people who were there, farmers, the organizers of ad fairs and other events to promote the production and the sale of local produce and even meat now. I think there was a story in the paper today about--
Yeah, sure. They picked by times had a big article about that.
It's really wonderful.
But this is growing immensely, it really is. And what they're asking, I think, of local leaders to do is to consider how town lands might be used for people to lease to grow, to grow locally, which would be really good. And the restaurants, the connection of Peter Hyde from the Blue Moon Bistro--
Blue Moon Bistro in Dennis.
He's the one who provided the food, and he's also president of the Chefs Association. And the connection with the chefs to the farmers and how they are actually buying produce from local farmers in the restaurants, and how they advertise that, you know, the partnership of the chef and the farmer is really pretty amazing what's happening. And it's growing, and it's great because it does create jobs. And then the fishing, the--
The fisherman's.
The Hook Fishermen's Association. Eric was there, and he talked about what they're doing and trying to work with local restaurants in providing fish for the day, which would be great, but, you know, the catch of the day.
Yeah.
A way to kind of promote that, especially during the course of the summer, but in the winter as well, because they have a hard time in the winter with fish coming from Canada.
There's a piece of that that, you know, that I think that we need to spend more time on, and that is advertising day boat fish in restaurants.
Day boat, that's the term.
Because the idea is that if you know that there's going to be fresh fish at a particular restaurant, they were looking for ways to let people know that that was available. I really regretted that, you know, they had to go to another meeting before that to miss their meal.
Oh, wow, you're really good.
And I regret I didn't put it in my calendar, right? I remembered it last night, I was saying--
Yeah, 'cause Phil said, isn't she? I said, "Yeah, I thought you said you..."
I never thought you'd miss a meal.
No, I mean, especially that I've been to that before. They had it down at Willie's in Eastham one year and another, I can't remember exactly where, the year before that, but it's really fantastic. Another good idea came from a gentleman in the Outer Cape Health. He's, I think, their new program director, his name is Kristen, and Christopher, and he was suggesting that schools have their gardens, and the schools are then able to cultivate that and provide it as lunches and that sort of thing, which I think, and then you could have that part of the curriculum. You could bring children out and teach them agriculture.
Our 4-H group, by the way, does that, and Francine down in Truro has a 4-H group that, you know, is supporting some of that, and of course, they were talking about the Truro Agri Fair that takes place at the end of August, beginning of September, and we talked about, you know, how we could reduce the congestion at that time, get support from, you know, some of the other agencies for transportation like the RTA and so forth. But it's all good stuff.
All good stuff.
And by the way, the reason I was late was that the hospital is looking at the disconnect between discharge and, let's see, reassumption of private care, you know, the hospital. So it was something that hospitals, you know, capable hospitals are very concerned about because they're looking to make sure that people are aware that they, you know, of the kind of services that they're offering, and that they're trying to build up the perception of credibility for their diagnostic procedures as well as their care procedures. So all of that was based upon, let's say, a citizens group that is trying to help the hospital find that. So although I missed the meal, I could certainly miss a little more. But having eaten at the Blue Moon, you really probably got a great time.
That was very nice. And a lot of people from the farmers markets, who have farmers markets around the Cape.
Yeah, they made a very important point that farmer--
Farmers, because everybody always says, "It takes such a long time to get there," meaning the family, and I said, "Now, look at it this way."
But it's worth the trip, right?
"I'm coming from there. It takes the same amount of time to get there as it does to get here, so."
Well, according to what they said last night, there's a big opportunity in Falmouth to convert much of the land that's owned by the town, because about 3,700 acres.
Yes.
They could be converted-- Putting a plug in. So I think he's putting a plug in.
Who?
Bill.
Oh, well, no, that's true, but what they asked us to think about was, a lot of the land that's under conservation, there are certain restrictions that we don't know whether they let, probably would not be allowed to lease it. I don't know whether you could or not, you have to look. Sometimes the conservation restrictions do include municipal use and sometimes they don't. So we have to really look at that.
Or sometimes they include agricultural and sometimes they don't.
That's right, exactly.
But this is a good opportunity to mention, that's exactly what we did with County Farm.
That's right, exactly.
Very successful, from all reports.
Yeah, Tim Fryberry was mentioned several times, you know, as promoting something that's increased the perception of availability of, you know, of local food that is of high quality, and that what we, you know, what we really need to do is to promote the idea that buying local is getting, you know, not only the most nutritious food, but the best tasting food, and it can provide, and this is close to my heart, it can provide a livable income for the people that work on the farms if it's both locally grown and locally supported.
We were, they were talking about the Peterson farm in Falmouth, which is 88 acres, and the town bought that back in the late 90s. It had been in the Peterson family since Governor Bradford was, you know, when this was the original home colony. And Governor Bradford deeded that land to the Petersons at the time. So that was 1,700, maybe, late 1600s? I don't remember when Governor Bradford--
That would've been the middle of--
The middle of the 1700s, yeah.
No, 1600s.
Yeah, it's been in that--
Bradford was like 16th, Bradford was governor from about 1605 to 1660.
Well, then, that's when it occurred, but it's been in that family all the years.
I grew up in Falmouth, too.
Or maybe just the old--
I thought you knew him.
The idea is, it is actually bird's wing.
The first Thanksgiving.
Nothing has ever, ever been helped on it. And right now, the only, the only group that occupies it is a bunch of sheep that are owned by a vet who leases that house, because they've always been there, the sheep and the llama. I mean, they're a great attraction for children to tour the farm, but when you think about the capacity of that farm, of what it could do in terms of producing, you know, vegetables and other things, so, okay. 10:30, we have a tour, so--
Hopefully Lou will be here. I'm not clear whether we're supposed to meet him up there or not, but we can do that. Maybe, Madam Chair, you want to talk about the next meeting, because there's some--
Yes, let's talk about the meeting next week, which is December.
15. Right now, we're scheduled to start at 12:30, I have, and we're meeting with State Senator -elect Dan Wolf at 12:35. Andrew Gottlieb will be here, and then at 2 o'clock, we have the Human Rights Committee coming in, so. You let me know, potential conflict you have. I have a potential conflict in that I'm scheduled to do a presentation for the Nantucket Selectment on Retirement stuff, so I have to be getting on boat. So I might have to bug out at some point during that afternoon.
And I will not be here next week because I'm going up to the State House to, not to celebrate anything and not to party, but to actually meet with a couple of our state representatives and with the Senate President and take up some of the issues that, right now, that what we've been working on is the CMed. We had correspondence from Dan Matthews, who's the county director for Norfolk County, similar to your position. And back in 2009, they filed a bill that would increase the fees on deeds, on the registry--
On the recording.
Recording fees by $10. And the idea was that for counties, that that might help pay for the CMed, the emergency dispatch services.
But I don't believe that that legislation specifically--
It is not specific to anything, but that was really the intent of those who were backing the legislation. But it didn't go anywhere. It ended up in committee. So the question now is, would we support another filing for this next legislative session to do the same thing? So I think in talking about it, and I've talked to Senator Murray's staff, is, right now, the fire chiefs have, the Fire Chiefs Association here on the Cape has procured grant funding.
Actually, we are the holder of the grant.
Okay, we're the holder of the grant.
It's actually the Regional Emergency Planning Committee. I did talk to Sean O'Brien. I should've known Sean O'Brien would've had all the answers. And I will give you a copy of my--
But before we start to discuss it, you're going to provide a piece of information that we're missing as far as deliberation that you'll obtain when you go talk to Senator President Murray, because since it wasn't on the agenda--
Right, no, it's not--
I was going to bring it up in recommission as report because I had received that legislation, and--
And what I've included--
I guess the discrepancy is the other counties are looking to increase some of their revenues.
They're just looking for revenue.
Right, yeah.
Sounds exactly what it is.
Increase, and so it would be a $10 add-on to deeds transactions.
The recording fee.
To the fee.
And I should mention--
And it's never been raised from--
No, the fees have gone up, but the problem is, is they've all gone into the state coffers. They've gone up, I think they're $75 now. The county still gets, I believe, five, and the state gets the other 70, so--
And would this legislation give the full amount of the $10 to the counties?
It would give the $10 to the county.
Right.
And that was, I think that was the reason why we looked at it before as being a positive thing, but because the complaint had been that as these fees gone up, we were visited with the blame of raising, of raising these fees, but we were clear that we weren't getting the benefit from it.
Right.
And that still occurs, so--
Right, but this would be a general, and this would affect all counties. So I have no problem with that. I mean, I understand what they're under, and we're under the same thing, and--
I do believe that we need to talk--
But if it's, but if our stipulation is tied to the CMed, I'm not sure if that's, if we should have that in the same discussion, or should we, or can we just use that money as a general, as general money?
We can't, I don't think that we should just agree to raise the fee if we don't know how we want to spend it.
Right.
We also have to get some feedback.
But we also have to find a way to fund the regional dispatch. I mean, that's a big issue for us. So we have to be clear about what it is we want to do with this, and if we're going to support it, would we support it because it's going to accomplish our goal here in funding regional dispatch? But until we know the status of the study that we, that the chiefs are doing, I think it's important to have that information before we make any commitments.
Plus, an opinion from the people who put this legislation forward as to what they perceive as being its benefit or its shortfall. And I think that that piece, which we'll collect next Wednesday, would, let's say, would inform a discussion that we should perhaps put on our agenda or at the time after that.
Well, I have to say, I think, I spoke with Dan Matthews at length as well, and I said, "Dan, kind of where are you with this?" And he said he was, they were looking for, to line up sponsors to file the new bill in the new session. I said, "Probably it would be a good idea if the counties got together so that they could strategize kind of," and this is exactly the type of thing we would strategize, because I'm sure from the Norfolk's and the Plymouth's and the Bristol's of the world, the Dukes, they're looking for a revenue piece. They are not as fortunate as us. In our charter, we have the deeds tax that we assess on any transactions. They don't have that. So they're really looking for a revenue piece. So I think if we suggested that the language specifically said it's for CMed, we may have issues with our fellow county folk who would not support tangling it, I guess, for lack of a better phrase.
But if we calculate, I mean, once it comes in as a general revenue, we can then, you know, line item or earmark that money as for that if we wish.
We could, certainly we would have that discretion.
We could look at that as, yeah, we would have that discretion. So we could, we could make our own decisions with that money.
You certainly could.
So I don't think that there's really a conflict there, and I wouldn't want to hold them hostage to what our--
Exactly. Those kind of strategy things that I'm-- I don't disagree that in the legislature, if you said, "This is what we're going to do with it," it has a better chance of flying than a general revenue thing, which sometimes has, you know, issues behind it.
Well, if it's, if for the other counties, it's simply general revenue to support their operating budget, which would not be the case with us, it would be for a specific purpose.
I'd put on my finance app. It may be, yeah, exactly. That would be good for us.
We would have the money available to support it.
In any case, I think that, you know, we have to be careful as we introduce the subject that we don't come up with a conclusion prior to finding, you know, as much information as we can, which is what you're intending to do next week. And then after that, perhaps you could schedule--
You know, Dan has, Dan Matthews has had other county meetings, because you've attended them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you've attended.
And in Plymouth, but they haven't had any recently.
We haven't had one since, the last one was really--
In Bedford, I think, wasn't that--
It was in Bedford, I believe.
To discuss the Sheriff's--
It was basically about the sheriff's takeover.
They had wanted us to resist that takeover because several of the other counties only have the sheriff and the jail as a, you know, as a basis.
Yeah, and that's actually, I think, the origination of the revenue legislation is because when the sheriffs went, they really, really left, you know, they're kind of left with the unfunded pension piece, which, you know, we are paying for, and nothing to pay for.
So we should bring this back on our agenda at our next regular meeting, which would be in January, because the 22nd, we don't, do we have a meeting that day or--
We'll convene to sign stuff, but pretty much, I've tried to hold the agenda--
Well, I know, it's like three days--
Maybe that'll change after we talk about the 15th, but--
Can I ask another question? When is our holiday Friday?
That's the 22nd.
That's the 22nd.
So we were going to meet, the original schedule is to meet at 11:30, do your stuff, not really do anything agenda-wise, then at noon would be the launch.
But we may want to have some other discussion.
Yeah, let me kind of try to just wrap this up. So what I've given you, I won't go into my report, but on the, it's called the 911 Dispatch Assessment, we've received a grant of $135,000. This is a draft of the RFP that's going out very soon. It actually calls for this to be response by the end of the year, December 31st, and in it, it describes what the work is, and basically the scope of work is to look at all the 911 service, CMed service, all of the communication services that are provided by all of the towns on Cape Cod, whether it be through the sheriff's central dispatch or whether they're doing it on their own, and just do an assessment of all of those things.
And then the responses will be by January 3rd.
January 3rd, what did I see?
Yeah, on page five.
Yeah.
And then the completes and middle of technical across proposals by January 14th.
Yep.
So this is good. I'm glad we have this now.
This is good, this is in work. Elaine and Sean, Elaine, Elaine Davis, our procurement directors are working on this with Sean O'Brien, so we're getting this going.
And who is the lead from the Fire Chiefs group?
I believe, I think George Russell is the lead in this as well, yeah.
Great, well, that's good news. That's very good.
So good, so that's getting going. So that's a key piece of kind of how all these things will fit together.
Yeah. Because, you know, a lot of the discussion about how this occurs in terms of the information that dispatch needs, in terms of maps and parcels and structures that are on the parcels and inhabitants of structures, if there are any, and the source of the water for that structure, whether it's town water or well water, and where the, where the fire hydrants are, that kind of information is really important, but it also relates to our whole IBM project as well.
The Open Cape project.
The Open Cape, because that's the strategic information that, that the IBM platform will have for water quality issues as well. I mean, all, all of this information really ties together in a very interesting way because if, when you think of all of the groups on the Cape, like the pond watchers who go out and collect, and, yeah, and, yeah, data every day for water quality, where does that go? And by being able to put it in one place and have a, as Paul calls it, a central data center for the Cape would be really important, and discussing with that.
I think it's very important at this point that how the IBM thing is beginning to, you know, to unfold, perhaps we should schedule an update for people, for us, and then because we're, you know, because we're taping, that would bring everybody else up to date as to what, as to what that, what the design of that looks like and who the partners are and what the initial intent is with regard to--
That would be good. Let me remind you that in January, we'll be doing budget review.
We'll be doing budgets, yeah. So what will be our schedule, say, on, we also decided that our first meeting in January will be on a Monday instead of Wednesday, which would be January 3rd.
January 3rd.
And that would be from 9 to--
It would start--
Start at 9.
Yeah, maybe we'll probably start at 8:30, because I think my first budget, I don't have my schedule funding, is probably 9 or 9:30, so let's say start 8:30.
8:30 and go until 3:30 or--
Yeah, probably 3:30.
3:30, okay.
Because the Assembly then won't be beating that day. They'll be beating on Wednesday. So let's go back, so the 15th then, so we'll keep the schedule in--
For the 15th, are you, you're okay with all of this?
That's fine, so far, yeah.
I just was putting that county commissioner, me--
And then--
I really regret not being here when Dan Wolf comes, because it's kind of like a good thing.
And maybe what I suggest is, these guys, let me go back, let's go back. Bill has kindly provided me, remember last week I mentioned that I will send you an email, and I didn't because I knew it wasn't this week. Bill originally thought, I think, Dan was coming in today, and of course, I think he was, and we got the schedule all messed up, but Dan's coming in next week. So he sent me his list of topics. Did you even forward this to the--
No, I believe under the rules, we have to bring it up now.
So he's got me a list of topics. I can share those with you if you will add or to that, if you think he's missed anything, then you guys will have something to kind of begin the topic of discussion with Dan. Then I suggest that you give him a call and say, "Apologies not being there," blah, blah, blah. Maybe we set up a separate time that you can meet with him separately if you want to. Maggie and I will be scheduling meetings with all of the delegation, including all the new members, for January 20, blah, 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 22nd.
At the MMA?
At the MMA, I think it's that Thursday morning we usually go on.
At the State House.
To supplement that, by the way, when I went to the dedication of the Wind Tower in Dennis, Congressman Lakeyton was there, and I just happened to have a copy with me, so I dropped that on him. I figured, you know--
No, that's good, because everyone's been dropping on him, trying to get him here, and so far, nothing. So it's good that everybody keeps doing that.
His staff keeps telling me that it's still evaluating whether I'm worthy to meet with him.
Well--
Well, I'm watching the trailer of him last Sunday, so I had his attention for 45 minutes. That was good.
Yeah, well, that's good. So maybe, apparently Lou's not coming down here, hopefully we're meeting him up there, so--
There's another thing, I have on my calendar that next week we dedicated to be Luca Taldo Day.
Yes.
We have a certificate.
Do we, we're going to have a certificate?
We will, yeah. Originally, we were doing this next week, not this week, and that's part of our--
Another thing I'd like to mention on that vein is, you know, the Assembly will be coming to its last meeting next week. George Bryant, who has been there since the beginning, will be leaving. I think we should do something for him, and I don't know how long Charlotte's been there, but--
A long time, I think.
But I think we should do something for the exiting, especially George. I mean, he is really the dean of that Assembly, and, you know, never, never, never was inactive. I mean, he cared about the whole Cape, and he saw the regional view of what the Assembly is supposed to look at.
For George Bryant.
Who else is leaving? You've got a couple of others that are leaving that are coming back.
From Truro.
Yeah, well, they've been there a few, you know, we can--
Tom Keys.
Yeah, but George is really--
George has been there forever.
George has been there from the very first Assembly all the way through.
He's the longest-serving Assembly member ever. He's the dean.
Charlotte's been on there--
George's been there for a long time.
Because in my second term on the Assembly, she, that's when she came on, because that woman that passed, the, had been there for years and years and years.
Well, nevertheless, George has been there since the beginning, and I think that we should recognize, and as I say, he, he travels the Cape, he goes to all kinds of things, he checks out, I mean, much to some people's chagrin, but I think he was a good delegate.
Very loyal.
Very loyal, and very low--
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. I agree, and so I have--
By the way, Julie's still with Taylor's cousin.
Oh, yes, I didn't know that.
He has a distant connection there.
I was actually this morning riding a bike to school, to go to school, or--
She does consulting with--
I know, well, she's taught there for years, I thought she retired.
I think that's a good point.
She rides a bike every, every day.
Well, I'm happy that Julie's still staying over there. That's a good thing.
All right, so we should recess.
We should recess, and now we're going up to the--
Archives, up to the old jail building.
The old jail building.
The museum.
Assuming Lou's around, I hope, I can--
I'm sure he is, he's probably in there waiting breathless for ours.
I know we can get into the archive building, because it's our building.
And then we're coming back at 11:30 to reconvene.
I have a question, does the Monday, January 3rd meeting represent a change to Monday meetings without a one--
No, no, it's just that one week.
It's just that one.
Thank you.
Although there, I think that's something to discuss, you know, the county folk, of having night meetings and Saturday meetings, so that people that, you know, actually have a job to work for 11:00, might be able to come.
So we're. Yeah, we'll have to get a bigger room.
And by the way, the last, last Saturday, they had the whole meeting on C-3 TV, the whole meeting, all two and a half hours.
Oh, my God.
God help everyone.
This gal there, Tess Karchik, who, without, without her, I don't tell you, this, this wouldn't have been possible.
Thank you.
She, she's been fantastic, and you'll see what she's done here. This is a, a accumulation of about over 60 years of activities pertaining to the various aspects, which I'll explain as we go along in Barnstable County. We'll start. What we have are about eight or nine different categories, specifically, here we have an accumulation of Kennedy memorabilia, perhaps some that the, I'm quite sure that the JFK Museum doesn't have, and this is a.
We have some old pictures of JFK from.
Some that I've taken over the years, and others.
These are ones that Lou has taken.
Princes of mine have taken, and I was, was privileged to have had a copy.
Many photos.
So those are rare photographs there, and the categories that we have here are all scattered around here, as Tess has got, we started off 60-some-odd years ago with the oral history of Cape Cod. As you know, there was two fundamental earmarks that are, I think that the county are privileged to, can say, well, we were the first, you know, and that was the pioneered oral history. Checking with the Library of Commerce in Washington DC at the time, I ascertained that there was nobody doing folklore history.
The date is 1952.
April 4th, 1952, that was when that was recorded by Lou with Captain Gerald, who was a captain in Hyannis. He talked about 1880s, 1870s at the time.
That was one of the first recorders I brought with me from Washington DC, and at that time, there were very few on Cape Cod, and consequently, recording folklore, you'll find over there in the corner, the early Laura.
Now, behind Laura, there are probably another fifty from 1950s.
On the bottom, in the bottom there are the early recordings. We started off with the tapes.
Good to see you.
And so some of those are way back, in other words, we have stories of old timers telling about their experiences out at sea, and the wives that went with them, and they told about their escapades being shipwrecked and cannibals and all that stuff, and who's gonna be next for supper? So there's a lot of fascinating, so in other words, we pioneered oral history in the United States right here, that's, that's, that's proof right there, and if anybody can show you at that time that they were doing that, I'd like to know about it. And then the other thing is law enforcement, and the Cape, as you know, I worked under Sheriff Tallick for 25 years, under him and successive sheriffs, and at that, during that period of time, I developed a system of categorizing fingerprints so they could be scanned, and I approached a person who had the first computers that came out, and I, I said, is it possible to do such and such a thing? He says, yes. I says, okay, you're coming with me. I brought him to the International Conference in Rochester, New York, presented it there, the FBI grabbed all of it, and they ran with it. So consequently, today, you can find fingerprints instantaneously through a computer, providing the person with fingerprinting. Years ago, we'd have to go through a filing cabinets like this, and it's a hint of its proposition, unless you know who the suspect was, and in the corner is a number of photo identifications I made over the years, there's just this, just this mattering of identifications that were made here on Cape Cod through the use of fingerprints and other physical means. So then we turned it over to Tess, and Tess, you can explain some of the other aspects of the files.
Well, going over to this part over here, Lou has some tapes, some slides of things back in, say, the Tersetten Tenerife of Barnstable on the 358th anniversary, and what we've purchased is a scanner that if you put those old slides in here from the 50s and 60s, it'll make them into eight by 10 photos. We also have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of old, and I mean many, of old films, such as this, that when you put them into the scanner also, it'll make them into eight by 10 photos.
Isn't that fantastic, but taking a negative is gonna be making me.
We've purchased this to do those. And then we have over here, as Lou had told you, the old recordings. I've been able to find an old recorder that hooks up to my computer, so these old recordings down here will all be taped onto this reel-to-reel recorder and put into DVDs. And I have a project plan that I've written, and it describes every one of these things that we're doing step by step. We have the VHS tapes that, I don't know, go back maybe to the 70s and 80s, and I have a VHF recorder that hooks into my computer, and they will be all transferred onto DVDs for the public use.
Can those negatives also be scanned, when they're scanned, can they also be put into a DVD disc?
Oh, they will be put into a PC and then burned into a DVD.
Okay, great, okay, so they'll, so they'll be saved and protected in various different ways?
This is more or less, we feel, a holding, so, so it is an opportunity for us to inventory what we have, categorize them, put them on DVDs, make them accessible, but to the public, I want to talk to you about that later, it's, it's a difficult thing for the public to come in and imbue these things.
Yes.
Well, go ahead.
So we're hoping that the Barnstable County will support us with a website, so we can upload these to the website eventually. These are all old histories by Donald Trazer, they were done of the 1880s, 1890s, I don't let people handle them right now.
Not oral histories, you just written, written histories.
They're written histories, a lot of them for Donald Trazer, some of them are older from people before Donald Trazer wrote those.
I inherit the Donald Trazer's file.
So those will eventually, with time, and maybe some, you know, help, you would be able to also scan those and protect those?
There are close to 3,000 documents in this room.
Well, sea captains and.
I did this for Tales of Cape Cod, and it took me two years to do 2,000 documents, and we had the same kind of recordings, so I did the recordings, and we had lectures and television series, so it took 2,000 hours to do approximately 2,000 documents, so.
I'd like to inject to, what you see here is only about 50, 50% of what we have, at least this room's not big enough to put what we have, it's got about four, 500 books of histories of Cape Cod and a lot of other material. We also have, like you see, where the cameraman is over there, behind him is the statue of that, that is the, we call Mark Catson, or James Otis, and right here, you'll see the more statues, but we've got the Mark Cats of all of them, and this is just not a place, a lot of them run 10, 15, $20,000, these are bronze, kind of talking about that, they're expensive, so we don't have, and this is not the repository bar, so that's another phase of all the statues in the town that were put, put up.
And speaking of these documents, if you open these drawers, you'll find this is, for instance, the Native American drawer, and you'll see that all the folders have been inventoried, such as these are photographs, so these are photographs that Lou took Mashpee Indian Tribe back when the meeting house was being dedicated, so we have these photographs, and those will eventually be matched to those slides over there, so we have.
This is from Mashpee.
Right here.
Correct.
This, this one here, these are sheeptons of my day, Lorenzo Jeffers, outstanding, he and I went up to call the governor of the state house, fighting for certain things, Russell, and then, of course, everybody knows him, and Usamika, one of the earliest statues of our time.
So these need to be scanned, so they're not going to be handled by the public, but eventually we'll put them into those archival slip, plastic slips, so that they can't be harmed.
Those are wonderful.
I mean, truly, Lou, this is such a significant project.
It is.
Well, I don't know.
It is, truly, I mean.
People realize until I took these things out of the, out of the attic, so to speak, a lot of it got some dust on it, poor, poor Tess is all crazy.
I'm sure there's gems in here that have never been really seen by historians and.
Every category, we have things like that.
We got slides, we got films, we got just whatever.
You have the old Look magazine from after Kennedy was assassinated, I see it up there.
Yes.
There's not a lot of stuff crammed in here, and like I said, we have 50% more to come over, so this building is gonna hold it.
Okay.
Why are you here? Can I throw in the pitch?
Yes, please do.
That we spoke at one of your meetings, the possibility of an outside, I saw that slab out there, and I think, if I remember correctly, you said it's possible for us to have a piece of land there, we'll, with between the prisoners and, and some volunteer help and, and volunteer money, we could put up a building which would, would be the county's building, it would be property of the county, and then we could house not only what you see here, but as, as your archivists have been downstairs in your, in your cell.
Who let you down there, Lou?
And there's certain things that probably you might want the public to see, they can't see them all down there, we could have a certain amount of those also there, so it would really be Barnstable County archives. So you'd have a slab already there.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's why we have the trailers.
And it could be designed in such a way that would be, it would be open to the public, where the public would want to come, and not only see and hear, and have places where people can actually go and listen to some of the oral history.
We'll have, we'll put stations.
But see artifacts.
Couple of, we'll have a couple of stations, Tess will tell you, Tess already, we have the Tales of Cape Cod, a couple of stations where people can come in and sit down and hear for themselves some of the early folklore of Cape Cod.
I've uploaded them also to the Tales of Cape Cod website, so there are a few of them on there that people, we also, working closely with the Sturgis Library, and we've given 200 of our oral recordings to the Sturgis Library from Tales of Cape Cod, so we're gonna do the same thing here, we're gonna share.
Disseminating a lot to other.
Yeah, I think it would be a great partnership and to have all of that information, be able to flow easily from place to place.
Now, Tess has done an outstanding job of putting together what you have here and what we, what our plans are, she's made one for each one of you, and.
Yes.
And it's really mind-boggling. We put in for a few grants, and hopefully, we might, incidentally, the money that we, that we received now, I put in a little bit myself, and we have a small grant given to us, and Tess, out of that 15,000, how much have you spent?
The only thing in this room that we purchased is that computer right there. I've got everybody else to donate.
From the sheriff's days.
Everything has been donated in this office, the cabinets, the tables, the desks.
We operate on a shoestring.
Yes.
So 2,000 dollars for the computer.
And contemplating on doing the same thing in the future, so we can get things done, that's the way I've done it over the years. Later on, if you have time, we're gonna go over and I'll show you two other projects that I.
That's where we're going from here, right.
We're going from here, and so, let me just tell you that the categories are also listed there, but I'll run through them very quickly, just so that you know what you have here.
He just wants to, Pat, he just wants to.
I'm gonna run through.
I do.
Bill.
I'm gonna run through what's here, we have the Civil War Centennial, which, all of these things, I was either chairman or co-chairman with Dorothy Warhol, who helped me form Tales of Cape Cod, she's on since then, she was former editor of the Barnstable Patriot. We have the history of the bicentennial of the county, the Tersettenary, relationships between Barnstable and England, which I cherish, we just got a beautiful cot from the mayor and mayoress, and we, we'll, I have some more of this poem, Tess, that we haven't brought here, and we have the British collection that was brought over here years ago, they're over the museum there, but I'm gonna bring them over here, the town has loaned those to me. Then we have the Mayflower too, which we were responsible for having it, they were originally gonna go to Plymouth, but through the efforts of Dorothy Warhol and I, and Levert Solmsall and a few others, we were able to get it in a province town. And then the old wooden jail, you're gonna see that, and the, and a lot of that early material is here. The Trazer Museum, the, well, the acquisition of that years ago, that, that I acquired. Then the Native Americans, you saw some of that, Iano's grave site, we have a lot of information on that, I acquired that years ago, seven and a half acres of land, I got it for $1,000, you know what it's worth today?
I don't know.
And a lot of that, that thousand didn't, came out of the pictorial publications that I put together, so the funds from that bought that. So things can be done, what I'm getting at, is things can be done without going to the county and, and the, and the towns and so forth, if people put their minds to it, they can get these things done.
Lou, none of this would have been done without you.
That's exactly right.
Well, I had.
None of this would have been done without you, you were, you were the nexus and the leader for all of this, and.
Do you think this could have been done without?
I'm just doing the work, he's done the history.
You know, the point, the point that without, you know, without the interest that you've had, you emphasize the point that if we don't have respect and appreciation for our past, we really have no interest in our future, we have to know where we come from, to know where we're going.
The amazing part of it is, a lot of this, the beginnings of it, was, I was here with Sheriff Tallick, who is a great leader, and I'm, I'm working for him, what off time I had, I was able to begin the beginnings of the Cape Cod, and so that's been an accumulation of things over the years. Well, anyway, the continues not to forge, the Native Americans, you saw that, the Iano grave site I talked about, then Tales of Cape Cod, we have a building, as you know, I acquired that for $1, most of these acquisitions that I've made are for a dollar. I got the jail, the oldest wooden jail in the country that you'll see, I got that for $1,000 by virtue of getting the town to give Margarala Hallway, who owned that building, who owned that jail, and they built her a garage, and I got the, and we flaked, the, had it flaked, and brought it over to the site that it is there now, and I brought in people from Plymouth, and we did a dig, and a lot of things that go back to the Mayflower days were there.
Wow, at the new site?
At the old site.
At the old site.
Yeah, when we took the old jail out.
Right, and where was the old jail exactly?
On Old J Lane.
Oh, it was on Old, okay, Old J Lane, okay.
Lou, I want to know what J. Edgar Hoover has to, fits into all of this.
Well, this was, this was a jail, it was large.
J. Edgar Hoover, I went to the FBI National Academy, and I got a signed autograph from him, and I think the reason I got that was because I pioneered fingerprint scanning. I got the royal carpet treatment, when the local Asian, I told him that he didn't believe me, he had a red carpet going in his office, I don't know if you get it, it was about 100 feet long, and he gave me the tour of the building, and like a dime pool, I parked my cruiser out in the front there, luckily I, they left it alone, but anyway, there's a lot of good experience.
So there's.
And when I graduated.
Personal connection.
Yeah, then when I graduated from the academy, I brought my family to Washington DC at the Sheridan, and my children all shook hands with me, that was a thrill, a thrill for them. So that's what you see there, the, my FBI National Academy days and the photographs there.
Post over there with the.
Well, yeah, you, you receive that when you, if you're part of that.
Okay, so you still have more things on there.
Okay, so what else is, is else is here?
The Colonial Courthouse that I told you about, the folklore and so forth, and then of course, the statues, as you see there, and then Navy World War II things, I've got a lot of, a lot of photographs aboard our carrier of kamikaze attacks and things like that, and of course, the law enforcement things over here on the corner.
Your fingerprint.
And plaques, plaques, you know, you often wondered, I said, when I, I got a plaque and there's a bushel full of them over there, I said, what does a person do with plaques?
With plaques.
And after he expires, what happens to him?
He'll take care of it.
I've got a lot of people here, people in this room, they've got plaques, and you ask yourself. And you ask yourself, and you must have a bunch of them as well.
I'm sure we all do.
What do you do with them? But there are certain ones that you appreciate. I got one from the county commissioners over the years, several of them, and some from the state. Well, anyway, basically, that's it. There's more to come, as I said, about four hundred books, but there's no place to put them. I envision, and hopefully, if the county so fee sees fit, that spot there would be ideal. We could put a nice concrete, not a wooden building, but a concrete building that'll stand the test of time and that'll hold the archives of the county. And that's what I envision, and with the help of your commissioners, it'll be a reality.
I think we can...
I hope it can be done soon, because I checked on the Lord, and he said, maybe another year, maybe.
Okay, good. We'll see what we can do.
You've been trying that for twenty years.
This is the late Francis Broderick, you know? Francis, right? He's always late. My mad bomber hat.
QRC from years ago.
Made by Chinese slaves. You are...
Hat flip, no hat flip.
He was on the radio with Marconi.
With Marconi? Wow. I wasn't around.
I remember well. Go get them all.
He said it was very noisy. Sheila Lyons, other county commissioner, how are you? Good to meet you. Very good to meet you.
I know that guy.
Yes.
Hi, Laura. Oh, she isn't here. Hi, Laura. Good to see you.
Mickey Willis at the very inception, folks down at the acquisition of the...
I started out as the interim secretary, ended up as the permanent secretary, then they made me clerk. And they put me in for another year of torment.
And Bill will last, who's done a big... Oh, Bill is a retired chief petty officer from the Chatham Lenders. He's pretty damn good. Jack is a brown shoe. They say that because they weigh through my balls.
Francis, shut up. So who's going to start the tour?
Well, I will, if I can get, you know... If I can get George Washington's contemporary, say, to be quiet for a couple of minutes.
Alexander Hamilton.
Alexander Hamilton, yes. Well, he lost the duel.
Yes, he did.
This is probably the most extensive collection of Coast Guard material open to the public right now, because the Coast Guard hasn't been able to create a national museum yet, unlike all the other military services. So we start right at the beginning with Alexander Hamilton, who established the Revenue Cutter Service in 1790. The Coast Guard dates itself from then. And it's interesting that we're in a customs house, and here, customs house, custom house, whichever is the correct term.
U.S. Post Office, then customs?
Well, it was Post Office later, because the Coast Guard today still has a direct connection with the collection of customs and excise. They're under Homeland Security, where U.S. Customs is also, and all Coast Guard officers and petty officers, part of their oath is related to collection of customs. So we go into the early revenue cutters, some of the famous ones from the Civil War. And then, when the United States bought Alaska, the Coast Guard was instrumental in becoming the first government... It was the Revenue Cutter Service then, but it was the first government presence in Alaska. More directly related to the Cape are the lighthouses, which probably everybody's favorite thing. The lighthouse service also eventually became part of the Coast Guard. It was originally separate. And you're all from the Cape, so you're familiar with all the famous lighthouses and some of the lighthouse stories on the Cape. Another story that really began in Massachusetts is the Life Saving Service, which started... The first one was up in Cohasset in 1803 with the Massachusetts Humane Society, which eventually was absorbed into the U.S. Life Saving Service in the 1870s. There were stations all over the Cape, and a couple of them still exist. The one in, I think it's Kahooton Hollow, is now the Beach Comber Bar, but most of the buildings have been washed away.
Oh, really? Is that one of the original?
A few of them still exist. Yeah.
Oh, that's fascinating.
So a lot of this material here is from the Life Saving Service. As the Life Saving Service became part of the Coast Guard, the stations became Coast Guard stations. Probably the most famous Coast Guard rescue story on the Cape is the Pendleton. It's considered by the Coast Guard to be the third greatest rescue of all time. It took place in 1952, and Bernie Weber was responsible, he was the leader of a group that was responsible for rescuing thirty-two out of the thirty-three people on the Pendleton and bringing them back into Chatham. I'm sure you're all familiar with the fact that the boat still exists. It belongs to the Orleans Historical Society. In fact, it delivered Santa Claus to Chatham the other day. So it's still directly involved in what goes on.
Bernie passed away recently, then?
He passed away in January 2009. The newest Coast Guard cutter under construction is the Coast Guard Cutter Bernard C. Weber. It'll unfortunately be stationed in Florida, but it's the first of a whole class of cutters that are going to be named for enlisted heroes of the Coast Guard. Most of the military services tend to focus on the officers, but this time, they're going to name all of the ships after the enlisted heroes. There's another one in the pipeline named after Captain Mayo, who was from the Cape Cod area, who was a famous lifesaver. The third or fourth ship in the collection, in the group, is going to be named for him. This cart over here also belongs, is on old to us, more than it's historical. A common way to make rescues on the Cape or anywhere in the country were breeches buoys. And the last time it was done was Province Town in 1962, and this is the cart that we used. They would fire a gun, fire a line out to the ship, and then run the breeches buoy back and forth from the shore of the ship until they rescued everybody on board. This was eventually replaced by the helicopter. Most of the things that have changed in the Coast Guard, life saving, lighthouses, rescues, have all been changed by technology. Communications are better, or navigation is better. You can use helicopters, so there's been many changes in that time. So what we look back to here is how it was done in the old days. This section here, with Francis Base, I know when Lou and Francis were part of the first group to open this, they thought, how are we ever going to fill this building? Well, now, six or seven years later, the question is, how do we get everything into the building? We have a lot of things in the basement that we'd love to display.
I'm sure people bring things to you, do they?
All the time. We're at the point now where we actually have to turn things away, because we've already got four swords or five uniforms or...
Yes, right.
But at the beginning, it was difficult to fill the place up. So these are the buoy tenders, which if you're around the Cape, you see these two, the black vessels that maintain the markers and channel markers and lighthouses and buoys. This happens to be the Bellock, the White Sage, which is a typical Coast Guard story. That ship served in the Coast Guard for almost fifty years. The average for the Navy is about twelve years, but the Coast Guard tends to use their ships about fifty years. The biggest cutters in the service now were built in the sixties. So it's constantly trying to get an extra dollar to offer. Kind of like us, we're reflective of the Coast Guard, because the Coast Guard never has any money, and neither do we.
It doesn't make amazing work.
What, Francis? We always mourn Francis, because if you wear a hearing aid and that bell gets rung, it can be very painful. And then the large cutters, which are one of the more familiar scenes, the large Coast Guard cutters that you're used to seeing on television, and some of the cutters from the past, and a couple of famous rescues. This painting up here represents a rescue of a... It used to be a Pan Am Clipper. By the 1940s, it was the Bermuda Skyfunk. And it had it. And they were able to rescue everyone. I'm trying to make this as quick as possible, because I'm sure you folks have...
We do, but you...
Would you like to follow?
Yeah.
This is the Coast Guard Academy. Actually, this was a ship that was involved in that rescue. There are a lot more light ships on duty, but over the years, on the case, there were many. Most standards, the Antica. There were three light ships lost off the Cape. The Crossfire, the Antica was run over by the Arizona Limited, this is a ship that had happened. And the Venus light ship was lost in the hurricane in 1944 with all hands. This light here was at the bottom of Buzzard's Bay for fifty-two years. That was one of the lights off the Venus light ship. We have some great models here. Some of these are by a man named Dick Matson from Chatham, who doesn't refer to each other. Others are by a man from Rhode Island, that's Coast Guard, named Mike Meehan. This room is supported by the Lightship Sales Association, which is, as the name implies, a group of former lightship sales. And since the last lightship was serving, I mean, it's kind of a...
Yes, I'm sure.
Well, I was wondering if you wanted me here. Where are you hiding my... The barn school stuff is out there. Okay. Let's see, so we tested those here, I was telling you about. I'm trying to get these, when we get the buildings set up. Yeah, they really should be in a place where they're more recognized. They don't fit with what else is in the museum anymore, but they're important, and they should be something to make of the cemetery, you know?
I sounded off downstairs, which is, Coast Guard is going to have that. Now, they're going to have the town things here. They grew so fast.
That was probably what I was saying at the beginning of the beginning of the film. Here you are, bulging.
Come in this room. This aisle here is kind of a dead-end situation, so we'll kind of wait. This is some of the smaller boats in the Coast Guard. These are the boats that Chatham has now, although actually, the ones that were just recently damaged. They ran their way back to Washington State to be repaired. But you see these everywhere. This is some of the material about the last forty-four footer. It was retired in 2009. It was the same weekend that they also had a memorial service of Bernie Weber, where the commandant of the Coast Guard came up. A little bit on the Andria Doria, which of course is a famous Cape Cod story. As you go around the corner. I guess we have two tours, so I'll wait.
Yes. Get those people.
Are you taking over, Francis? Are you taking over?
No, we know it now. You keep doing what you're doing.
I do, if I can keep you out of the way. This section over here is World War II. A lot of people don't realize the involvement of the Coast Guard in wartime. In major wars, the Coast Guard becomes part of the Navy. The last time that happened, where the entire Coast Guard was absorbed into the Navy, was World War II. These pictures here are of Eagle, which is the Coast Guard Academy's training ship. That was a German training ship. It was taken from the German Navy as a war prize. It was the horse vessel. In 1946, it was taken. A lot of these photographs and materials come from the family of Admiral Lyndon Spencer, who was a vice admiral in the Coast Guard. He grew up in Falmouth.
Did you see this, Michael? Falmouth, using the Falmouth Enterprise photographer?
Yes. You couldn't do that today, but they took a photographer with them on the ship, and that's where a lot of these were taken. And a lot of this material is from him. The only Coast Guard member to win the Medal of Honor was Douglas Monroe, who won at Aquatic Canal, rescuing Marines in 1942. The oil paintings, these are actually prophecies from an artist named Anton Martin Fisher, who joined the Coast Guard specifically to paint Fort Smith. And these are all painted during the North Atlantic convoys. The Coast Guard was very active in the escorting of the ships in the North Atlantic convoys. As you come around the corner, this section here is all of Vietnam. Bernie Weber, famous for the Pendleton rescue, ended up serving in Vietnam on an eighty-two foot patrol boat. And all of this material is from Vietnam. Jim Maderos is a retired commander in the Coast Guard, who was down in Sri Lanka.
You remember that?
There were small businesses. Seven of those guys were killed in Vietnam, including six on eighty-two foot patrol boats and one pilot. And this is all material from Vietnam there. Going back to World War II, this was one of sixty-eighty-three foot patrol boats that were sent, they were shipped on freighters to England for D-Day. They were used to patrol the English Channel on D-Day to rescue people from the water. They picked up about fifteen hundred people during the rescue. The flags here are from D-Day. Vincent Balacata, who was a resident of Dennis, donated these. He served on the CG-20, which was one of the rescue craft during the war. These uniforms here are from the Coast Guard in Iraq and Afghanistan. Coast Guard has, this is one of the Coast Guards, this is the Coast Guard Cutter Montemoy from Woods Hole, being loaded onto, a hundred and ten foot cutter being loaded onto a freighter to ship to the Persian Gulf. It's still over there.
Oh, it's still over there.
And this is from a unit in Afghanistan. Women of the Coast Guard are represented here. The spars were the first women. They were the, the spars were the Coast Guard equivalent of the waves and the wax, and they served in all kinds of support roles during the Second World War. This was an officer's uniform. This woman's still, she lives in America, she's a woman from Smoska. But all of her uniforms were from Saks. She couldn't wear the ones that were issued. She had the malt tailor made at Saks.
Of course.
Good for her.
This is an academy uniform.
I understand that.
Beth Young was a commander in the Coast Guard and a pilot. She's stationed at the air station right now, graduated from the Coast Guard Academy in 1989. And this was one of her drill uniforms. Matticamille, somebody who may be familiar with...
Oh, yes, right. I remember Matticamille. I've been reading for years.
Really?
Back in the sixties. Yeah. She, and they had touch. We were all the one time, we were in the, and there she was.
She was never actually in the Coast Guard. In that picture, she's an honorary chief, but later on, she was an honorary warrant officer, but was closely related to the Coast Guard Station at Matticamille.
She used to train watch dogs.
During the Second World War, she trained patrol dogs. Ida Lewis was a famous lifesaver in Newport, Rhode Island, and the cutter, the buoy tender, Ida Lewis is named for her. That's an enlisted sparrow.
Yes. Very stylish.
Now, one of the biggest operations the Coast Guard has here on Cape Cod is the air station, and that's where I spend my time. And all of these are aircraft that the Coast Guard has used in various times. Many of them, Cape Cod away, this problem, see, they used handy guns many times, B-24s after the Second World War, B-24s.
I still think, is cargo ships going by? One of his very big ones.
Yeah. Maybe there's sea birds. I used to know these things when I thought it was...
The Coast Guard Vietnam?
I know. I grew up on ships. In Boston Navy, that's what we did on Sundays. We went to every ship that came into port. So, yeah, there's...
A lot of aircraft still use Otis for practice, too, even though if they're not Coast Guard, even if the Air Force and the Air National Guard have gone. But it's actually the largest Coast Guard facility in the United States as far as personnel, because they have the housing over there. They took over the housing from the Air Force. So they have housing for Woods Hole, housing for Boston. They run buses back and forth to Boston. So for the total number of people, that, I think, is currently the largest unit. Air station wise, they've got four helicopters and four jets, and they're in the process of building a new hangar to replace.
I remember seeing this, it was just a few weeks ago, this plane was going overhead, and I said, wow, I haven't seen a plane like that in years. And, you know, I could see it was going to Otis in this direction, so it might have been just doing a...
So all of these typical uniforms from the earlier times, and some of the current aircraft, and many of the earlier aircraft. This uniform produced over there was in Salem Flying Corps. He wanted to stay with Flying Corps while he was in the Corps. And that was one of the... This is Paul Gary, you know, the commander of the, who was the commanding officer at the air station here at the Cape. There's also the test pilot for one of the original, one of the helicopters that the Coast Guard uses today. And this section here is all about the air station on Cape Cod that opened in 1907 to replace the air station in Salem, Massachusetts. That's kind of a really quick look at some of the things we have here. We just received these cases, the Coast Guard, the district in Boston, these were surplus to them.[1648.25] So what's surplus to them was great for us.
Right, good.
Anything we can, anything we can do.
Yes.
Is everybody in?
Looking well.
Hey, Lou.
Hi. What I don't like about this house is what it seems to be like.
I just hope you're good for the day. I mean, why I always look like myself?
Show them the piece de resistance in the back.
Oh, there's so many in here, Lou.
Yeah, but there are all the pieces of resistance in the back.
Yes, you've got it.
You gotta see this here.
Yeah.
Forty B housing.
Jessica, we do ask you not to touch the burnt wood. I know you probably won't, but...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you see the ship?
Oh, yes.
See the mast?
Uh-huh.
And this is W. Bartlett, 13D for Day, October 1698, and 27D for Day, he went out. And we know his name, when he was here, probably a sailor is a good bet, because they were excellent artists back then.
Right.
I mean, they did, they did incredible work. They had so much downtime on the ships that they were able to learn to whittle and do things and...
So that was protected during the fire? There was a plaque or something was over it?
Yeah, what a marvel.
Oh, how wonderful.
Actually, it's...
I hadn't thought any for the plaque.
So that was a prisoner carving that in?
Yes.
To commemorate his stay here?
Yeah.
Were there, was there evidence of other people doing the same? There must have been.
Well, Lou told me that was all shipped and stuff on this wall. There's pictures, you said?
Yeah.